Here.
Peter Bosenbach.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Lisa Hadeen.
Here.
Dave Pembel.
Here.
Russell Olaf here.
Kelsey Waits.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
All right, terrific, thank you. We do have one change to the agenda, and honestly I don't know if it shows up in the copies that were put on the table, I didn't get so far to look at that. Under new hires, accepting hires.
Number nine.
Number nine, motion to approve employment. The last person on the list, Gina Salvucci, I apologize if that's a mispronunciation, has rescinded her acceptance, so we'll be removing her from the item, that list. It's lined out on that one? Okay, it may not be lined out online.
It is.
Okay, well, all right, we're all caught up then. Terrific. So when, I just want to sure, be assured that when we make the motion to approve the agenda, that it is the amended agenda with Miss Salvucci removed. Okay, so that being said, could I get a motion in a second to approve the amended agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, thank you. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the July 17th regular board meeting, 2019?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our fourth item, the motion to approve the bills payable, can I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Terrific, and with that, we'll move to item number four on the agenda, superintendent's report.
And a lot of these are just very brief updates. The bond dollars, I just wanted to share, I really never knew the impact that when we put in the bond to be able to help with the technology, it's just really helping us more than we even anticipated, which means it's going to help the school district for years to come, as well as we're able to take some of our $100,000 out of our general fund each year and save it for technology. But I just wanted to let you know that up at our high school, we have a lab that's dedicated pretty much to a classroom for photography, for film, for hire editing. As you can imagine, that requires some higher end technology, and it's been on the want list for a few years. So with the bond dollars, messy came to me, and we did approve to upgrade that lab, and then we were able to put some of the higher end technology in another lab as well, because the one lab is pretty much used every hour with students as a classroom setting. So then we were able to upgrade another lab that students could flow to, and then I believe that we put six computers in the media center too, so that they could go on and do editing there as well. So, timing is perfect, it's been needed for a few years, we haven't been able to do it. So that's going to be a much needed improvement at the high school for the start of this year. Todd Field and Middle School Project, board members hop in, we just took a tour. Todd Field, very close to being done, there's still a few, a few things that need some tidying up, and they're not going to get done by the first game. As Trent Hanson said, it's like building a home and he's ready for it to be over. As soon as you think you get one thing done, it's the next thing. But for, from what we saw tonight, it's beautiful, and again compared to a lot of other athletic complexes, it's got some legacy to it. It definitely has some, some legacy to it. And to be able to hear from Trent firsthand how varsity sports are already scheduling, soccer's going to work out that they'll be there till 4:30, the whole soccer JV and varsity can come down because they can do practice sessions on the entire field. Varsity then is coming down at 4:30 after that, so it'll be used almost every day from, right after school from 3:00 to 6:00. So already it's being planned for, for high usage. We did notice, and that's why we're passing the...
I just wanted to jump in, one thing that I was really impressed with in talking with Trent about that specific scheduling piece was that while varsity teams, boys and girls soccer and football will be playing their games there, they did make an intentional effort, and every lower class, lower graded team, so JV, B, and ninth grade will play at least one field on Todd this season, one game on Todd Field this season. So, the ninth graders in the soccer program will have that opportunity.
And we learned tonight that something that, you know, when we were talking about facility planning, what, two years ago, Dave, you were on that committee, you were on that committee, Joe, I think you were on that committee too. When we talked about the handicapped accessibility, none of us knew the law that it does have to be open at all times. And so Trent educated us today that that, the lift by law has to be open, so they know that on a, on a high usage night, whether that be graduation or probably a Friday night football game, that they're just going to have to put a purse, a person there, so that the six-year-old doesn't go up and down, up and down, up and down, which every six-year-old is going to try and do. But, you know, Trent, you know, we did notice, and they'll get it fixed, that right now the first layer of the parking lot's on, and we do have some water accumulating in one corner, and they'll look to fix that, whether that be through more drainage or sump pump or whatever it might be. But for the most part, it's beautiful, and we heard a lot of the little things that when we sat on the facility committee that we never even thought of, just the different colors every five yards, the concrete area where our youth are going to be able to set up tents or whatever at a, at a youth soccer or youth lacrosse, it's going to be very impressive. The future planning for future pavers, just all those things that went into the discussion down the road. And I think anybody who dared to use the bathrooms there in the last decade will see a much...
Much improvement.
Much improvement. Most people did not dare to, to use the bathrooms. We did talk to Trent about our request as a board, if on the high usage nights, we could at least have a sign up top that says, "Try to give preference to senior parking." Trent said that he could do that, but without paying somebody to stand there and say, "Hey, Peter, you don't look like a senior yet," and you'd take it as a compliment, right?
I would.
And I said, yeah, and I said the board wasn't really looking for that, the board just wanted to give recognition that there's a lot of grandparents that come to the game, it's limited parking. He told us tonight that usually every home football game, which is our highest attendance athletic event, he saves 10 to 12 of the spots, whether that be for referees, the scorekeeper, et cetera, those people that do need to get in there. So there'll be about another 75 spots that will be open, and of course, some of those are going to be handicap parking as well. So, I just, I know that as a board, we talked about that, I don't believe that we should pay to have somebody man it unless you as a board do, and we can talk about that as a work session. We'll just kind of see how the first home game goes with a sign there saying, "Give preference to seniors," so.
I like the, I'll just chime in, I really like the idea of, in the foresight of making the field real simple. You know, he said there's not a lot of what the 25 yard line, the numbers are outlined in another color, it's just a real simple looking field, he said, because he wants to, it's, it's the heritage of that whole place, he wants, they want to make it look like grass as much as possible, so that's, that's good foresight on that.
And then because we're on cable television, I, you know, can't say the names out loud because they want to remain anonymous, but we've had some very generous families that have given to spruce it up a little bit extra too with the scoreboard and those times. So thank you, you know who you are, they don't, they don't want the recognition, but we always appreciate when our community kicks in the extra. And the volunteers, we saw the press boxes, that volunteers came and painted the press boxes, and it just, it jazzes it up that, that one more step. And I know, Russ, you've been a very active member of the Football Association over the years, and you, you've been volunteering there yourself, so you know how much they've given over the years. So thank you to the volunteers that, that came there as well. One other thing, and then we can go on to the next thing, he did talk about, when you have a turf field, you want limited grass around it, because grass brings dirt and mud onto the field. And so then he talked about on the, the visitor's side specifically, there's a row of about, what, seven feet of grass?
Yep.
That's tough to mow, going to have to be mowed by a push mower as the grass kicks towards the field. So he said they're already looking at that and thinking that might not be good down the road, and so whether it's wild grass, whether it's flowers, whether it's, you know, other plants, that's probably something that we're going to have to add to that site as well down the, the road because of that. So, anyway, Todd Field, the tour was very good, it's impressive, and our, the youth of our community are very, very fortunate for many years to come. The middle school, we just came back from the middle school tour, and it's dirty, it's messy, it's like a war zone down there, but Joel repeatedly said that this is what they do for a living, and they'll get that section cleaned up and, and ready to go. The ceiling's all, wires are hanging down. The bathrooms and locker rooms are impressive, it's right what I had hoped they would be, to be able to bring that privacy to our students. It's, it's really when we went and toured Edina, when we toured Shakopee, and what we saw, when we saw what other schools were doing, it's, it's right what we had hoped it would be, the fact that you can go into a shower, close the door behind you, I think lock the door because there's a cutoff on the bottom and there's a cutoff on the top, change your clothes in their shower, put your towel back over you and come back out, that's what we all wanted. So, that part was impressive as, as well. And of course, the, the rest of it, when it's done, won't be that impressive, because it's ceiling tile and lights covering up all the, the new HVAC. And of course, the gymnasium, that'll be, that'll be impressive again when we get the new floor in there, but that's not till the end of the project. So again, they're, they're on schedule. Thank you to our middle school staff who, at the end of the year, put in a lot of work to get a lot of things moved so that we could get rocking and rolling. They're, they're a little bit further in some areas than they had hoped, so that's good news too. Other thoughts from board members who you all took the tour, any other thoughts?
I, I think that, like, what I was most impressed was, was the improvement in the lighting, going to LED, providing much brighter, better lighting for people to, to just pass through on, that, that's a big improvement. The redoing of the floors in the locker room, that was very impressive, I thought that, you know, those are going to turn out very nice.
But as you mentioned with the LEDs too, the cost savings of switching to LEDs.
Oh yes, the, the real kicker is going to be down the road when this project is completed, and, and just the electric reduction in load will be substantial, just by replacing the lighting to LED, and saving ourselves a substantial dollar.
And on a, on another note too, Joe shared with us, that fifth grade had the highest turnout ever before school, that like 91.9% of the fifth graders have been here. So, you know, the fact that we're not hearing complaints from our parents, because our parents come through with their fifth graders too, they just know that this is part of doing a remodeling, they're walking through, they know that it's a little bit messy, and I've not had one phone call about, you know, the conditions of the building, they just accept that, hey, this is part of what we need to do. So, change orders are going to, the middle school is where more of our change orders are going to come. That's the tightest one on budget. Todd Field is under budget, at 99% going to be under budget, we know that, but as they're getting into an older school, the change orders are going to keep, keep coming, so. Teacher negotiations update, just want to share that we've had a good round of teacher negotiations, Peter sits on that committee, Lisa, Scott Gergen who can't be here, I haven't shared a lot of the details with the rest of you as board members, so thank you for your, your patience, what we typically, you give us trust in negotiating that contract. We do have a tentative agreement, they're going to bring it to a vote to their representatives, you know, next week. Then once that vote takes place, we're anticipating that it would get approved, then I'll put the information back to you, and the committee members and I will talk to you about what we did, why we did it, et cetera, and then we'll come for a full vote on that in, in September. But it's been a good round of negotiations, and with every negotiation, there's always pluses and minuses, that's just part of negotiations, but it's been a good round of negotiations. Cameras on all buses, over the years, again, this is where the bond's helping out too with the technology, being able to bring cameras on the buses, finally just pulled the trigger and just said, "Let's do it." We probably had about 10 to 12 cameras on buses over the last two years, it is the way of the, what you do in the year 2019. It's not to catch students being bad, it's not to catch a bus driver who's not doing their job, it's for the health and safety of, of everyone. So, I haven't talked to Terry, but they were on schedule to have all the buses, and I think it's up around, when you think of our buses that also transport to 917, it's up around 48 buses that we do put cameras on. So that's a, that's a plus as, as we continue to move forward. And I, and I think that when we talked to the bond, about the bond, we didn't know what some of these technology things were going to be. We weren't able to say that, yeah, absolutely, for sure, we're going to put cameras on buses, and so that's why tonight gives me the opportunity to, to share some of that as well.
Hey Tim, can you explain a little more about the cameras? What are they, what kind of camera is it, what are they doing?
Basically, it's at the front of the bus, and it's just monitoring the students, but...
Is it record, it's just recording?
Yeah, and we can keep that tape for so, so long if there's a, a situation where student comes home and says, "No, I didn't say that," or "I didn't do that." The audio isn't great on the bus, but it's improving. And so then the principal could look at it and say, "Um, Lisa," you know...
It looks like you kind of did it.
Part of the tough part on a bus is that you got the data privacy with the other students, so you can't sometimes show the parent that, but at least a principal can say, "Hey, I looked at it, and I did see your son up and out of their seat," or "Your daughter up and out of their seat." And sometimes it might be a situation where maybe the bus driver should take more control, and the bus company wants to know that. Maybe stop the bus and say, "Hey, it's time to settle down." So, you know, that's, that's the purpose of it. Achievement and integration, it's, you all know as a board, it's, through the state of Minnesota, I kind of compare it to a grant because it's extra dollars that are coming in, but you as a board also had to prove part of that as a levy, and I just wanted to let you know that one of the things that we decided to do in first year is you can spend money on technology on a one-time expenditure, so we, we heavy front-ended it on technology in the first year, because as more and more teachers become avid teachers, we'll need to spend more of it on their salaries over the next two to three years. And so again, I checked with Jen, and I think it's around 360 Chromebooks that, in year one that we're purchasing. Now that helps more than just avid students, because as those students are using those Chromebooks, there's more Chromebooks freed up for, for other students. As we start getting into e-learning days, we have more Chromebooks than that we can share for students if they want to take them home, et cetera. So, again, the achievement and integration dollars don't only help just the students that are in the, the avid program, it's also helping the rest of our students, as well as it frees up more technology. So again, great use of those dollars in year, year one, and great planning by Jen Rieckel. And then the, the first reading of the student activity accounting, 713, all of us saw that at our last work session, there was just one minor change to it, and we just said, "Hey, we better, instead of having a second reading on that, let's just put it out for a first reading again." So, it's just listed here as a first reading for you. So, with that, that's my superintendent report.
All right, thank you, Tim. So unless there's any questions on that, those reports, we'll move into the action items for tonight. Our first action item is a motion to approve and accept the employee contract for non-public nurses that runs from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th of 2020. Is that accurate, is that an annual contract, or is that potentially a two-year?
Yeah, I thought it was a two-year, but you based it off of a two-year, one and a half, one and a half, so it is a one-year?
Um, we just approved it one-year, it's not entirely projected.
Okay, so, yeah, it'd be a one-year.
Okay, so that's accurate. Okay, terrific. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our second action item is a motion to approve the elimination of the classification and corresponding position description for the family resource coordinator. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? My understanding, Tim, is this is part of a reorganization, we're not...
Yeah, we, we still have...
Not coordinating with families, it's a reorganization of the community and...
Yep, through a social worker position.
Yeah, and it's going to be a restructure of that, or not a restructure, but there'll be a, the work will be done in a different position.
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our third action item tonight then is a motion to approve the second reading of two policies, policy 709, Student Transportation Safety, and policy 721, Uniform Grant Guidance Policy Regarding Federal Revenue Sources. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I forget who's on the policy committee, I'm sorry to say.
Kelsey.
Okay, do you have any insights or input?
No, I mean, all in all, we didn't make too many changes, they were little tweaks.
Yeah, we really looked to see what was statute and what was recommendation.
Okay, all right, terrific. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now we have a motion to approve two change orders, as was foreshadowed in the superintendent's report. One is at the middle, is part of the middle school project for Corville Constructors, $52,529 is an add, and a second change order tonight is at the Todd Field Project for Peterson Companies, roughly the same amount, probably coincidentally, $52,000, $56 and 2 cents. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Is there any discussion?
As you heard from, you know, leading on both of these is typically Joe Haas, so he sits in on all the construction meetings at the middle school and Jim Huberity, and then every week there's a meeting on Todd Field, and that's Trent Hanson and Jim Huberity. And so it has to go through the legwork of them saying, "Yes, this is what we want." Then on all these, as you also heard Joe talk about tonight, then Wold comes in, because if there is a change order, we rely on Wold to tell us that, yeah, that's, that's a fair change order. We believe the hours are fair, we believe the rate is fair, we don't believe it has to be overtime, et cetera, so that's how we use Wold. I can't remember if I talked about these at a work session, I think I sent you some updates via email. The middle school improvements, a lot of it is the mechanical duck work, the extra duck work that had to be done there. Todd Field was when they got into the concession stand, some of the electrical and the wiring that had to be done underneath the concession stand that they weren't projecting. I know that the play clocks were an additional, I want to say 3,500, 3,800, somewhere in there. So, it's gone through the process, so we are recommending approval. We're meeting, Jen and I are tomorrow, we're meeting with Wold, because they have more change orders coming, and we tell them that we don't bring it to the board agenda until we've had a chance to go through it, and so those people will just have to wait.
Do you have a sense that at the middle school, where they're working out, is probably the toughest, most unknowns with the locker rooms and the gym and the music rooms?
I do think so, yep.
Okay.
And a lot of it ties in, you can see on the middle school where they had to blow that hole through that, that wall for the HVAC systems, we've all heard, we refer to the dungeon area, there were lots of unknowns in there. When you get into more of the classrooms...
So this, should slow down.
Yeah, you're, we're thinking that the higher-end change orders, that we're going through them. Good question.
Did we get a motion in a second? I'm sorry, thank you.
Russ and Scott.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys tracking that.
Scott's on here.
Scott's on here.
He's here in spirit and he...
I was just doing that to see what Deanna would say when she's...
Given a chance, he would have seconded it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, given that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, terrific. Our fifth action item tonight is a motion to make, approve three changes to the 2019-2020 school calendar. And yes, for anybody that's re-watching this on TV, or watching it live, if that's in fact what's happening, that is this school year, okay? That is the year that we are going to start in two weeks. So we are, we are making a motion to consider three changes to this school year. So if you print it out, the calendar, and you have it on your refrigerator, following this action item, you may want to print a new calendar. Well, like, wait till a few days for it to get updated, but there, there will be a couple changes, anticipated. The first is to change Friday, September 27th of this year, from an early release day to a non-school day. And to change Fri, the second is to change Friday, May 8th of 2020, from an early release day to a non-school day. Those are both days that had been early release for staff development. The proposal is to make them a full release as a combination of teacher workshop and staff development. And then the third change is to Monday, November 18th, 2019, this November, from a school day to a non-school day for elementary students only. And this was discussed at our work session, Matt Estromate presented that there would be a full staff training, staff development on that day. So those are the three changes that are all considered in the same motion, and at this time, I would like to take a motion in a second, and then we can open it for further discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I'm wondering if we've gotten any feedback about trying to work on kids campus for that November 18th.
We have. We don't know for sure where we're at with it, because some of those employees might want to come for the training.
That's my concern about that.
And then some of them have children that aren't going to be in school that day, so we're still working on it. So yeah, right after our work session, I just emailed Susan Hernlum and Kerry Gore and said, "Hey, you know, if this is going to be a, a total day off with elementary, can we work on something?" So, it's still, yeah.
But we are continuing to follow up on that.
Yeah, yeah. I think the other thing too for you as board members, those of you who weren't on the teacher negotiations, two of these came out of teacher negotiations, so thank you for your patience, and it was, it was the last...
It was last week, it was the last...
Yeah, it was the last, and it wasn't something that we had talked about prior to that, so I, I thank you for board members of, all of a sudden we had to say to you, "Hey, this is part of the, this is part of the tentative agreement that we can't, that we typically don't talk about, but because it's part of our tentative agreement with it, you need to act on it tonight." And I think for board members, if we're going to have a half-day early out, it'd be just best then to pick that day, because you're going to get out early anyway, parents are inconvenienced anyway, because they have to pick up their child at noon. So when we, when we gave on the work time in the teachers' negotiations, we said, "Let's pick the two days where it's already an early out." And again, we've always said to our administrators, that every board I've ever worked with, if you come, the calendar is set, but if you come to us with a very legit reason that we need to alter the calendar, we'll consider it. And November 18th is part of that, it's, it's a day to work on behavior, discipline, ways to be proactive on student discipline, and so again, we don't, we know we don't like to change calendars for parents, specifically parents of younger students, because it's difficult for those parents to get daycare, specifically when our high school's still going to be in session. Many times, some of those high school students are the ones that help out the younger families, so, but again, we as a board know how important this training is, it's the most cost-effective way for us to do it during the contract year, rather than in the summer, where we, where we have to be paying training and staff to be there. So that's why we're bringing it forward at this late, late of a notice.
Well, and I think you pointed out, relative to the first two changes, it's, it's not common for us to make a calendar change based on a tentative agreement, we would commonly wait to assure that, that the teachers approve too, but we're super aware of the time constraints, and that people need to be planning and be aware, and I think we felt like negotiations were solid and respectable and respectful, and that we would anticipate that this is a... an agreement that'll be passed.
And we'll do this in E-News. We'll do it through communication on our websites, but we'll probably also use our phone system to call and let every parent know that, you know, timeliness is usually more important. If you tell me right now that May 8th, I'm not going to have school for my kid, I'll forget about it like three months from now. But for sure, the timeliness of, of September 27th, we'll want to get that out for sure. And then we'll emphasize that and then also say, "And there's these other days," but we'll really want to emphasize that. And then, of course, when those other days roll around, we'll say it again. But anyway, thank you for your patience as a board and thank you for doing what you would say you would do. That when, when we need a day off, if we have to, we'll do it. Well, I think you're going to say yes to it, but we'll find out.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our sixth action item for tonight is to approve two leaves. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I was just going to share with you as board members, I thought there'd be another person on here and that's an intermittent leave, so we don't have to have that on here.
Oh, okay. All right. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our seventh action item for tonight is approval of five retirements. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I mean, first of all, thank everyone. It's an average of about 30 years of service, which is, which is pretty great.
That's a strong commitment. Strong commitment to our district, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful. I would also say, this might be a good time if we have an update on the superintendent's search, or at least just to let the community know that we'll be working on it at the next meeting, or, since everyone seems, lots of people are paying attention to that right now.
So, really, the next work session though, the admin team will bring, you know, what their, the admin team, the admin committee, which is Joel, Russ, Scott Gergen, and discuss it at that, that work session. That's really, I gave them some background information to this point and we're going to talk about it next week. And then, at that work session, you as a board can talk further.
Yeah, so we're using the same, just so people understand, we're using the same structure we, we do for everything from the change orders to the policy amendments as we're working through our committee structure. So, the committee's been working on that, gathering data, you know, forming recommendations maybe.
Mainly through...
I don't know. Maybe through MSBA.
Mainly through MSBA, yeah.
Yeah, and just getting some insights. And then, the committees bring it forward to the, to the larger groups. So, we're just using the exact same work structure on this, but the, it'll be at the next work session, we'll get some feedback on that next step.
Which reminds me, at the end of this meeting, Russ and Joel, let's look at our calendars next week when we're going to pull together on that. And then we'll let Scott know.
Okay.
Want to also thank you to Tim for your years of service. And I've been here almost for all of them and I've seen how much the school has grown over those years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our eighth action item for tonight is a motion to accept the resignation of a list of individuals. Again, as is always the case for our action items like this where it's a big long list, the names are available on the district website and they're, they're available in the agenda that's in front of people that are at the meeting now. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our night, action item of the night is a motion to improve the employment of what on the face of it appears to be an even longer list of employees. And again, this is the point at which there was an amendment to the agenda and the last person from the list should be struck and probably appears struck actually in your copies. Could I get a motion in a second to improve the employment of that list of people?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
I just, no, go ahead.
Is it welcome down?
No. Welcome to Hastings, absolutely. Absolutely.
I do notice that the new equity coordinator is not on the list. Will we be approving? Next month then?
This paperwork is just coming through.
I was going to say, I mean, so that's a processing. So, that's a processing question maybe at this point. Yeah.
It's, it's, it's working as usual.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's in process, maybe what I meant to say.
Who made the motion on that? And O'Kelsey's second. Joe?
Apparently it takes two and a half of us to cover for Deanna.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a number of upcoming meetings, the welcome back event at the high school. That's Tuesday of next week, 27th. It's a two-staged event. Our next work session is on the 4th of September.
And we'll be doing that at the high school. I think it'll be in the lecture room. I'm not quite sure yet. And the reason that I would do it there is, there's a screen there. Wold is going to come and present on some design. Most of it will be us walking. So, those of you who are able to walk through tonight of the middle school and see what the showers and locker rooms look like, you'll have a better feel for what maybe the high school could be like in, in, in the bathroom. So, Wold's going to have some designs that they're going to want to show us and we'll walk into the locker rooms. I've asked Mike and Trent to come to that meeting too, just for you to hear their opinion of how that might impact. You know, our highest usage for showers is the high school, of how that might impact and what their thoughts are on it as well. So, I'm 90% certain it'll be in the lecture room, but I'll let you know that. But we are going to do it at the high school. And then, there'll maybe be one or two other items at that time. And then there'll be the discussion with you as the board on the interim from the admin team. So.
Okay.
The 18th regular board meeting will be here.
Yeah, regular board meeting will be here, regular time, 6 o'clock. All right. Could I get a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.